Our first order of business this evening is reports of city officers, and the first one being the comments by the mayor. I do have a couple of comments to make this evening, and both are resolutions. One is a resolution of sympathy to Virginia Feister Frederick, and I'd like to read a statement. Virginia Feister Frederick's career began with fashion design which took place in settings small and large, from its beginnings in her basement to its pinnacle when her designs were commissioned for the White House wedding of Lucy Johnson, President Lyndon Johnson's daughter. As a 1938 graduate of the University of Iowa, Virginia pioneered woman in local politics in a big way. The first female on the Lake Forest City Council, she served as First Ward Alderman from 1974 to 1978. Virginia then left local government for state politics. Elected to the Illinois House of Representatives in 1978, she served until 1994, when she chose to not run for reelection. Frederick's life story and work were included in a program last fall called "From Gowns to Gavels," the Lake Forest/Lake Bluff Historical Society, where she donated many items of the years and always supported the organization's activities. Virginia was a true lady, and her contributions to Lake Forest and the state of Illinois are numerous. In lieu of flowers, Frederick's family has requested that contributions be made to Lake Forest/Lake Bluff Historical Society. The second I'd like to do is read a resolution of appreciation.
Mayor, can I get a resolution?
Oh, I'm sorry, you do. That's...I would like to have a motion for acceptance of that resolution.
I'll make a motion to...
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? Motion carries. The second one is certainly on a much more pleasant note, and this is for a resolution of appreciation to a very longstanding employee at the City of Lake Forest. This is for Rosemary Hock, and it's, I think Bob and I were arm wrestling over who wanted to read this one, because I think everyone wants to stand up here and read this.
I want to know who wrote it.
I could tell you I didn't write it, but it was very clever. I don't know if Rosemary wrote her own resolution.
I know. If Bob made her write it, since no one else has written one of these in 25 years, so...
It's a prerogative of the outgoing information officer.
Maybe Ann. Ann probably wrote it.
It might take me the next half an hour to get through those, too, so... Whereas, Rosemary Rosie Hock has been loyal and dedicated employee of the City of Lake Forest since January 3, 1978, so we won't talk about your age, Rosie. Whereas, Rosie honorably retired from the city on May 31, 2010, whereas Rosie served in the following positions during her dedicated career. Executive Secretary, 1978, effectively guiding the entire city staff through amazing new communication technology, including the IBM Display Writer. Not that we're dating you here. Promoted to Administrative Assistant in October 1982, effectively guiding the entire city staff once again through amazing new communication technology, including answering machines and computers with DOS.
DOS.
DOS. I'll have to go back and remember that. That's how old it is. We don't even talk about it anymore.
The punch card?
Promoted to Assistant to the City Manager in November 1987, effectively guiding the entire city staff, I like that, once again, through amazing new communication technology, including the World Wide Web, Windows, voicemail, and televised meetings. Promoted to Public Information Officer in March 2002, effectively having mastered it all. And whereas, Rosie served at six trillion city council meetings, I only read them here, under three city managers, 10 mayors, and a countless number of aldermen, always with a smile on her face. And whereas, Rosie led the city council and residents through two marketing campaigns of major importance for home role status and a real estate transfer tax. And whereas, Rosie produced volumes of the dialogue over the last decade and served as the essential, I don't even know how to say this one correctly here, primarian, I probably missed an M somewhere, and PowerPoint guru for the city council and staff during her entire career, except for the occasional slippage, we don't admit that, do we, of some of her favorite words such as "dippity-doo." Whereas, Rosie planned and executed very memorable events for the city, including the Beach Bash Celebration after construction at the beach was completed, and the popular Summers in the Square family movie nights. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Lake Forest that the council on behalf of the administration and residents of the community hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Rosie Hock for public service faithfully performed, and be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is constructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Rosie Hock this 7th day of June 2010. I think you have to come up here and accept this, too. That's part of the deal.
I'd like to make the motion to accept. It's a privilege for such a wonderful city employee for so many years.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have to communicate just one more time here. First of all, I don't know who wrote that remarkable, I guess would be a good word, resolution. I thank you for that. But I really, really thank everybody that I've had the pleasure and the honor of working with all the city council and members and the aldermen. There's been some really remarkable people, some a little more interesting than others in different ways, but always a challenge, but also so rewarding. I've been so blessed. I know I've said that countless times recently, but it's very true, and I really hope that the city employees and the aldermen realize what a great community this is. The people of it really are givers, and it's an exceptional place. The employees really have the residents' interest at heart. Bob is a great leader. I have to thank Ann Whipple especially for my past, I don't know how many years we've worked together. We've had a good partnership, and I know we'll continue doing that. There's so many, many people to thank. I'm not going to get into it, but just please realize how good you have it, how wonderful it is to, I know it sounds corny, but the US of A is really the best place to be. We're really lucky, so thank you, each one of you, and I know I'll be seeing you around.
Our next item on the agenda is comments by city manager.
I will just point out the fact that she's only been off work for a week, and she already looks about 20 years younger, doesn't she? So, must be the job, or working for me, I'm not sure which. First item on my agenda is, Dushay Kalmar, Director of Human Resources, is going to present to the city council for your consideration for ratification, the recent contract that was negotiated between Metropolitan Area Police and the City of Lake Forest. Dushay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I am very pleased to present to you the police contract for ratification this evening. The contract is a three-year contract set to run May 1, 2010, to April 30, 2013. This turned out to be a very efficient process in negotiating this contract. We had two approximately three-hour meetings. Basically, they've rolled over their previous contract with a few minor changes and wage adjustments. The police union membership really worked to represent their own membership, but at the same time, they recognized the city's economic situation at this point in time and negotiated in very good faith. See if I can get this to work here. The contract goals that the city had in doing this was to maintain competitive salaries and benefits and to be sensitive to today's economic environment. While those were our goals, it very quickly became evident that the police officers' goals were the same goals. It was an absolute pleasure to work with our police professionals during this process. The salary schedule that we have agreed to and have been ratified by the police union is that on May 1, 2010, a 1% increase. This is in keeping with the general adjustments that we gave for non-union employees and also what was agreed to by our Public Works LFEA contract. May 1, 2011, another 1% increase. November 1, 2011, a 1.25% increase. Then going into the third and final year of the contract, May 1, 2012, 1.25%, and November 1, 1.6%. It is kind of unusual to split raises within a year. We have done it one time before, and that was during our last police contract, but it was a way for both sides to meet our goals. The police were, they did work very closely with us to reach this agreement, so I do recommend it for ratification this evening.
Any questions or comments?
I might just add that it was also reviewed with the PCA committee earlier today, so I don't know if there's any other further comments or questions that anybody might have on the council.
I'd like to make a motion to accept this. It certainly was wonderful, both for the police department members as well as the citizens. They work together and understand the economic constraints, and at the same time, they provide a great service to our community, and we really do appreciate them for their work and help at all times, so, big thank you, and I make the motion to accept.
I'll second it and echo John's comments, Alderman's comments.
You have a roll call, please.
Alderman Grellhaus.
Aye.
Alderman Novick.
Aye.
Alderman Widman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Morris.
Aye.
Alderman Hannerhand.
Aye.
Alderman O'Beal.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Eight A's, no N's, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and you might just stay right there, Dushay, because unfortunately, I don't have similar good news to report with respect to our negotiations with the fire department. And Dushay, if you could please brief the council on our going to arbitration with respect to the fire department and the IAFF.
Okay. We are currently attempting to negotiate our very first contract with the Lake Forest firefighters and fire lieutenants. An average first fire contract can take one to two years to negotiate, and as just an example, Palatine recently settled their first fire contract. It took them 19 months to do so. So typically, a first contract takes longer than the next contracts, subsequent contracts, but fire contracts, because of the detail that's typically involved, they generally do take even longer than another group's first contracts. Our goals when we set out were basically the same as they were for police. We wanted to maintain competitive salaries and benefits and be sensitive to the economic The bargaining unit was first certified in February 2009, and we began meeting, had our first meeting in September 2009. We met for eight months and had approximately 10 bargaining sessions. The union then requested mediation in April, and at that point in time, the city did offer to continue to meet to resolve some of our issues in May, and then again in May. Shortly after that, the union requested arbitration after having one mediation session. Interest arbitration in Illinois is mandatory for police and fire because they are not allowed to strike, as other unionized groups are, so this is not something that is an option for us. It is mandatory. Typically, however, interest arbitrage works best when the parties have exhausted in good faith the negotiations in the mediation process and have relatively few unresolved issues. Some concerns about arbitration at this point in time are that we have approximately 80 items to take to arbitration. That's an unprecedented number, and it is certainly atypical of our city process. We've only had one item go to arbitration through all these years, and it was simply a contract language clarification in the police contract. That actually took about a year and a half to resolve, just for that one item. We're also concerned about the cost, not only to the city of Lake Forest, but also, frankly, to the union fire members. Arbitration costs are shared equally between the city and the union, and our legal fees could be substantial because there are so many items to arbitrate, but at the same time, the firefighters' fees are, could be equally as substantial. And the way it works with the IAFF, which is International Association of Firefighters, is that they pay their dues to them, but those dues do not cover legal representation, so they have to then assess additional monies to their members in order to pay their legal fees. So this, it is concerned for us that this is going to cost them some money in addition to costing the city some money. The next steps going forward, we are currently in the process of selecting an arbitrator. That works kind of like selecting a jury, where we are given a list of arbitrators from the state labor relations board. We strike, they strike, I'm not sure who strikes first, but we go back and forth until we end up with an arbitrator. After that's done and a date is set for arbitration, it's almost like a hearing in that final proposals are prepared by each side, and each item is presented to the arbitrator. There are, you have court reporters who are recording the whole thing, and then the arbitrator will take both cases away, weigh the facts on each and every item, and then come back with a decision. The decisions on each item are made separately. It's not like they take all of one package or all of another. They're made separately, and that could take some time, too, just based on the number. But that's where we are, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Just one question on the, who pays the legal bills for the firemen? The firemen in Lake Forest or the whole group of the brother?
The firemen in Lake Forest.
Will cover all the legal bills for...
Correct. The firefighters, who are the members of the union, which does not include the management staff, but...
Okay, so, but it's not firefighters and other unions in the area?
No, it is only our firefighters.
Yeah, just a quick question. There was an attempt for mediation in April, and then arbitration filed in May, and there was 80 issues that remain open. Were any issues resolved with that initial mediation or...
During the mediation, no.
So, no progress whatsoever?
No progress was made during mediation.
Who filed for the arbitration?
The fire union did.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Do you have any questions?
We will, we will keep you apprised as we move forward. Unfortunately, we're, it's not moving in the same direction as we did with police and LFEA, but the system is pretty clear in the state of Illinois, and they've decided to file for binding arbitration, and that's the direction we're moving.
Is that all done by majority vote of the unionized members, or how do they do that? Can they opt out of the union now?
For, oh, for...
It just doesn't seem like a good process here so far. Doesn't seem like anybody's really gaining here.
Well, the, here's the...
I mean, I'm not trying to...
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Dushay. Basically, their bargaining team, which is three members, make that decision that, you know, for mediation or not, for arbitration or not. I don't know what the process is for changing the members of the bargaining team, but there is a process for decertification, but I think it's a very complicated process, and I couldn't tell you what that was.
Right, and actually, there are a few more bargaining unit members. I think there are five on their team, but, yeah, they're, they're the ones who are making those decisions. They are elected officers, for the most part, of the union, so their members have elected them to make those kinds of decisions.
And these five are all in Lake Forest?
Yes, yeah, they're all city employees.
Thank you, Dushay.
Thanks, Dushay.
And that completes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda is comments by council members and committee reports. First report being a report from the legal committee, which is a consideration of ordinance amending Chapter 40 of the city code to allow for the use of a vehicle immobilization device, commonly known as the boot. This is the first reading presented by Deputy Chief Glenn Burmeister.
This was considered at the last legal committee meeting. It's been under consideration for some time, and the legal committee drafted an ordinance for the city's adoption, but Deputy Chief Burmeister can explain the background of this.
Mr. Mayor, alderman, thank you for taking some time. I know you're busy tonight, so I don't have a large presentation for you, so I'll just go over a little bit of history and then try and answer some questions for you. This program started to collect unpaid parking ticket revenue that the city was facing. We did a pilot program back around the holidays in December where we borrowed a boot, and we actually had a decoy car out and hopes, and we had some publicity. We went to the newspaper, we had people that came out against the boot program, but the entire purpose of that was to collect the unpaid revenue. We found out that not too many people took us up on that. We even had amnesty for some, the unpaid tickets. They chose not to do that. However, the number of, so then this went to the legal committee for consideration for adoption, to make it a permanent part of our ordinances and our programs, our parking program. We reviewed, it's a rather, in your pack, it is the ordinance, it's a rather lengthy ordinance. It provides for substantial due process for the violators with notices sent, a pre-boot hearing, post-boot hearings, as well as each citation that they receive is eligible for administrative hearing. After a couple of legal committee meetings, we came up with a final draft, I think the fourth version, and I have some new numbers to date. While we were originally looking at targeting violators that had a certain dollar amount over, the good news is those have gone down, and those who had reached that certain dollar amount are, only remain three, and that total dollar amount is only $5,000. However, we went back 17 months, which is all of 2009 and the first five months of 2010, and while we collected $249,000 in parking revenue, we still outstanding of $166,155. So we think it's important to move forward with this program to see if we can recoup some of that other, other funds. The boot itself is a nominal fee of $300 to $600. The police department would implement it. The number of citations in the ordinance required is five, the duration is 90 days, and prior to anyone being boot, they have to be notified by the police department that their vehicle is then eligible for the boot. Any questions?
We only have one boot?
We don't have any at this point.
We don't have any yet, okay. We borrowed the boot?
We borrowed the boot.
I know that's special. Each town gets one with a special key.
We thought, we thought as part of our administrative hearing process, if we go with that company that provides our software, they were going to issue us a boot, but we have to go in their collections program for that as well, too, which we are not of right now, so we have to talk with them about that.
This is not related, but it's a common question that I get, and I get it a lot, which is people who get parking tickets that have no apparent parking violation, it's very difficult for them to find the time, you know, it's generally people who are working, find the time to find a time to go down to the police department, make their case, show them their city sticker, their parking sticker that's valid, and then have the whole process undone. Do we have any way to, I hear it all the time, I mean, and maybe perhaps because I commute downtown, most of them are all violations. The ones that I hear most about are violations in the city parking lot adjacent to the train station. I've been to the people's vehicles, they've showed me their ticket, they have a valid city sticker, they have a valid parking sticker for the train station. These are longtime residents of the town. Some of them, it's happened to them multiple times, and it's a constant irritant. How can we solve those kind of issues?
Well, there might, some of them might be mistakes on the part of the employee. They just miss it. Tinted windows have a big factor in some of that, if they're not placed in the correct location for the city stickers, that type of thing. Time of year, around the start of the new fiscal year, people might have purchased them, but they don't have them applied just yet. We will look at, when people communicate their issues via emails, or some people write letters, we address all concerns like that, as well as phone calls. This ordinance here with the boot, prior to going, each citation itself is eligible for the administrative hearing process that we have here in this chamber once a month, but for the boot hearing, it'd be, the hearings are at the police station by the chief of police or his designate.
Yeah, I would also emphasize that particularly if they've had multiple tickets and they have the correct passes, that they should either by letter or email let us know, and then we can also talk to the enforcement officer, because it's pretty much the same person, time in and time out, so that we can deal with that as well, if there is reason that they're not picking up on it.
That used to be a rotated position, and for the last three years now, it's been the same person, so the errors have decreased. We have people fill in for vacations and illnesses and that sort of thing, so there's some change that might be a cause of that.
I think it's with most people, they take it down when they're parking downtown or something, leave it on the dash, pull into the station, and forget to hang it back up again.
Some people don't like to drive with it.
Or drive with it swinging, because it's against the state law. I have a swinging thing from your rear, but I think that's what, it seems to be, most people come to me and complain. I have it, but the hard part is, is when they do go to the station, it's kind of tough luck it wasn't hanging up there at the time, and you're out of luck, so...
Where's the breakdown in revenue on, from parking violation?
I don't know if it's a, this...
By location or by type or whatever, however you track it, how you track, sorry that I'm a parking... that I'm a parking fanatic these days.
Yeah, I'm gonna, most of it-
Apologize that I'm asking these crazy questions.
Sounds like a parking violator, I don't know.
I'm not a violator, no, I don't think, not that I know of.
I don't have the exact breakdown, but it, there's substantial tickets. We wrote over twelve thousand tickets in this, in this time period, and both for overtime, which would be mostly on-street parking. We gave, uh, extended periods this last year because of the construction ongoing on Western, so we extended that by, uh, amount of time, but there's also a fair number of violations in the permit lots as well, too, that, that might have been some confusion with the construction as we moved people from lot to lot and displaced them from Western Avenue.
I might have a question, and it might be better for Victor on this. Yeah, this is basically a question of enforcement, and the boot, I appreciate the idea, it's enforcement, but it's almost like a public flogging. I'd like to avoid it if we can, but sometimes it's necessary. A lot of other communities, uh, have other ways to collect and, uh, say, there's some towns that they enter judgment on the traffic tickets and when you have people buying and selling real estate or applying for credit, these items appear on their credit history like time bombs, uh, where they're accruing interest. Do we do anything like that to try to collect on any of these tickets, or do we just let them sit there with no collection?
I may have to punt that one to, to Bob or to deputy chief on that. I, I, I don't know how far we take our, um, our enforcements. We do go through two different methods. One is through the adjudication that, uh, that's here monthly, and then after that, we also have others that go through the court system through our, our village prosecutor, our city prosecutor. Um, I, I don't know what the point at which we have, uh, collection efforts undertaken for any of those outstanding judgments.
Yeah, because-
Um, but, but as far as the boot goes, the way the ordinance is designed is really for those inveterate violators, not for the, the casual violators, so, um, the, the public flogging aspect becomes a little more justified with those folks.
Yeah, but five tickets, yeah, I mean, I don't know if it's-
It's, it's five tickets-
Ninety days old.
-that are at least ninety days old. So, it's, it's not, it's not just you had a bad week.
Any household with a couple of college kids? That's possible. But I'm just concerned about, uh, forms of enforcement, if we've exhausted all forms and, or if we could use other forms in concert with this, uh, just to heighten the collection. And the judgment way seems to be pretty efficient for a lot of other communities, and not horribly expensive.
And I think the legal committee talked about it, but then part of the problem is, is the legal expense that you've got entering those judgments and it actually then starts to detract from what the net increases or the net receipts are for the city. So, I think, at least, uh, the legal committee, when they talked about it, they felt as though, you know, we're sending them a letter saying, "You're potentially gonna get the boot, you might want to come in." They have an opportunity to actually ask for a hearing, uh, for the administrative if they feel that you have college kids at home and I didn't get these tickets and what do you mean, I've got all these tickets? There are opportunities to do, I think, give the violator the ability to come in and take care of them or to get them off the record before that we would take the, the final step of actually applying that. And, uh, as Glenn said, you know, right now, there's over a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars worth of outstanding parking tickets, which is considerable, and we have three individuals right now that total more than five thousand dollars just between the three. And so, um, I guess I would say those people deserve public flogging.
Well, and the advantage of public, public flogging also is that it may get the other people to pay their ticket, so, whereas if you do the judgment, no one ever knows, so.
'Cause I will tell you, when we did the pilot program and a lot of people came up and said, "Well, whose car is that?" Well, it was a police decoy car that we were using in hopes of encouraging people and while it got some, not, it didn't generate the kind of response that we were hoping for, but you can bet that when that goes on somebody's car going forward, they will want to know who that person is and no one's gonna want to be that person.
And we've instituted, uh, letter campaigns in the past, too, that resulted in people bringing in, so we've, we've reached out, I think, in many ways.
So, we've exhausted everything we can do?
Well, we haven't, we're, we're currently not in a, uh, collections contract right now, so it's another.
Any other comments by, uh, council? If not, entertain a motion for approval.
Make a motion to accept?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries? Yeah, just a comment on, um, council committee reports, and I did not get, and I, I'm sorry I remiss at this, but I did not send the email out yet, but I thought we might have an opportunity to speak about it before council, we did not. Um, starting at our next council meeting, which I believe is June twenty-first, um, we are gonna institute where all of the committees will be listed on the regular agenda items, and each alderman will have your assignment to whatever committee you're on, and you'll have the opportunity to present your report at each council meeting. Obviously, if you have nothing to report at that meeting, you can say that, but if you want to elaborate and, um, keep the public informed, it's more of an opportunity to keep this as a standing agenda item, so that will be instituted at my request starting on June twenty-first. Our next item on the agenda this evening is opportunity for public to address the city council on non-agenda items. Do we have anyone from the public that wants to comment on non-agenda items? No, uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda, and we have nine items on the consent agenda this evening. Um, if you like, I know I've done it in the past, I can read the, the titles of nine of these, and then go back and if you wish to have, um, comment on each one, or pick one or two, or whatever you want to do, is that fair, Bob, or you want to?
That's fair. If any, um, alderman wants to remove any item off the consent agenda for further conversation, we can certainly do that. You can take them as one motion. I might also point out that, uh, staff has tried to standardize how the reports are presented to you. I hope they're more helpful, uh, more informative, but if there's any additional information that you feel would be appropriate, we're just trying to anticipate and answer your questions, please let us know, 'cause we'd be happy to add that to this standardized format.
I, I have changes to the minutes, does that, does that mean that we were just gonna say, or?
Um, if, if you would, uh, allow me-
You, I'm asking.
Yeah, no, that's fine. If you allow me, what I'll do is typically just so the public is informed and those who may be watching at home, I'll read the, I'll read the nine items, and then if you want to have a comment or a question or bring it up specifically, you can go back and then address it that way. If you don't, we can take the rest of them as, uh, as a consent vote. So, um, I'll start out with the first item being the approval of the minutes from the May seventeenth, two thousand and ten regular meeting, the second item being the consideration of approval of prevailing wages resolution, the third item being an award of a contract for the Waukegan Road lighting and streetscape project, the fourth item is an award of a contract for the Old Elm Road water main replacement project, the fifth item is an award of a contract for the two thousand and ten sewer lining project, the sixth item is an award of a contract for the two thousand and ten annual concrete streets patching and sidewalk replacement program, seventh item being an award of a contract for the two thousand and ten annual pavement seal coating project, the eighth item is approval of the authorization or authorized invoices and payrolls, and the ninth is the authorization of treasurer's warrants to meet expenses for June two thousand and ten. So, alderman Moore, if you wish to start from number one and-
All I have is number one.
Okay.
So, okay, just start. Yeah, I'd like to, um, get added into the minutes. I did ask, uh, uh, the landscape architect, Mr. Stimson, if he would be willing to consider leaving the ring road in his, uh, as a vehi, for veh, use for vehicular use, and he said yes. And for that reason, I was willing to, uh, accept the gift. That's why, it was the last question I asked before we voted, and I just want to make sure that's part of the record.
Where would you like me to insert that?
Um, it was near the end, so I, I guess, uh, um, I didn't, I've, I've been out of town, I didn't listen to the meeting and find out where, but I do remember asking that question, that was a material question for me. And he stated his, uh, you could put down reluctant willingness, I think that would be, uh, um, appropriate, but-
They're not editorial, Alder. They're the facts.
I think that's, I think that was pretty accurate.
Mr. Mayor, uh, items three through seven are kind of an engineering bonanza because they total about one point six, seven million dollars, and, um, I don't wish to really prolong the meeting, but given the amount of money that we are talking about, I think we should make sure we have at least some opportunity to dialogue on those, 'cause it's an awful lot of money.
As you wish. We have, we have representatives here from, uh, engineering, Ken Magnus and Public Works, and Ramish is also here, so we can go through, pick the items you want, and we'll go through.
I, I'd like to pull number seven out. I thought three through six were pretty straightforward, but at least seven I'd like to talk a little bit about.
On, uh, number three, Ramish, my question is, uh, this is the five hundred and twenty-five thousand roughly for the Waukegan Road lighting and streetscape. My, my question is, um, are all these funds going to be coming out of the TIF?
That is correct, Alderman. Yeah, all are TIF funds. We had set aside the budget before the project began-
Right.
So, we had an estimate on what those amounts are, and these are part of the TIF project.
Okay, and are those funds, uh, received or to, do we have them or are they to be received?
No, that's part of the TIF we already have.
We have them.
Okay, great, okay. That was my only question on that one. On, uh, item number five, which is the, uh, two hundred thousand for the sewer lining project, I guess that, uh, we are gonna be sharing with Highland Park, um, do you happen to know offhand what the, uh, total distance is, miles or whatever, of the sewers that we are gonna be covering for that?
Yeah, it's, uh, our, our segment is around sixty-five hundred, so around one point two or so miles, sixty-five hundred lineal feet of sanitary sewer. This is the one, uh, as part of that consortium, uh, we did ask Lake Bluff and, uh, Highwood, but they did, they, they didn't want to participate, so we, we went with Highland Park.
And, um, my question on item number six, it's not so much a question as it might be a comment. I've said this in prior years when we talked about the, uh, sidewalk replacement program, and this is a hundred and fifty thousand for both streets patching and sidewalk replacement. Um, I, I've mentioned in the past that sometimes I think that we are, um, sense over generous in determining what are hazardous sidewalks or that have significant flaws, and we end up spending more money just filling up a hairline crack that may not be very aesthetic, but it really isn't a significant flaw or a real hazard. And have we pulled back now and adjusted our, our sort of gauge on what we're gonna be doing?
Right, Alderman. Uh, in, last year, we had a, you know, we had intern pretty much do the entire eighty-five miles of sidewalk and pretty much come up with a list, and if you recall, last year we did not budget for the sidewalk, for the same reason where we were doing the survey. Now we got the survey, plus this list also has the requests we get from the residents and the businesses who say that particular sidewalk is hazardous. I remember like by Bank Lane on, on Illinois, uh, there was a portion of sidewalk where we got the request, so that's why we, every other year we are budgeting fifty grand, and, and we're taking from that intern survey we did, and taking from that list and any request we get from the residents, we put up a list and whatever amount we get budgeted, we do the sidewalks. Again, those are what we call the hazardous sidewalks, not the hairline cracks or none of those sidewalks.
Okay, those are my questions, thank you.
I just have one question on the sidewalks. In the inventory, did we mark sidewalks that go underwater all the time?
Right.
And, and we're gonna be looking at raising some of those? I'm, I'm thinking by Christ Church and the way over to that soccer field, I see parents hiking along their Waukegan Road all the time and they're wet for weeks.
The Christ Church, uh, Alderman, we, we do have a drain there, it, it's a matter of, again, uh, raising their grade, there is a drain there on the Christ Church, and on the other side, we did raise the grade as part of our, uh, when we had the water main contract, they did do some regrading. Most of those work will require some kind of a grading, and again, we are trying to limit with what we got, the fifty grand. Those will entail a little bit more engineering than just replacing the sidewalks, so we are-
Put the sidewalk high and, and then the water will run off.
But, but then you gotta see the sides, the side grades, too, so it's, uh, but, no, those-
I mean, there's not that much water that sits on a, you know, on a sidewalk when it's low that makes it flooded, and if it was just higher, so it was equal with the other ground, it would run to the side, but, uh, between, you know, say, example, Christ Church and all the way down to Sunset Corners there-
Right.
-there's four or five major places that constantly people are complaining about the sidewalks below, uh, and we've looked at that for years. I'd just like to see if we can get some sort of priority in getting those cleared up, 'cause that is used an awful lot, especially with all the athletic things at the high school campus now going down to the sandwich shops down there, et cetera.
We'll, we'll take a look at those.
Yeah.
Just a quick que-
Go ahead.
Quick question on item four, and this would be the, uh, the water main being installed along Old Elm Road between Western and, uh, Grandview. Assuming this is passed, when's that project gonna go, and is it gonna interrupt traffic at all on Old Elm Road?
Right, the, the Old Elm traffic, we are gonna, um, it, you know, it, it, the project's between Grandview and, uh, Grandview and Western, so the detour traffic will be Green Bay to Wesley, down to Sheridan. We are trying to avoid the, you know, having traffic cut through the local roads. The project, if awarded tonight, you know, we are anticipating to start like July, we're gonna have a pre-con meeting and we're gonna allow the, only the local traffic, residents who live on that street to come through, rest of all, we're gonna try to detour them around, uh, so that, again, it's, it's a deep project, we are putting it at an eight foot, and it's a, such a narrow street, so the lane had to be closed for the most part, but we will allow residents who live on that streets to get by.
Okay, and for pizza deliveries, uh, with El Forno, we could still get in?
You can, but, yeah, you may have to ask, like, in sort of twenty minutes, they may say thirty minutes, so you gotta go around. But yes, you will.
Clarify this.
Maybe I, we can make a request.
Shop local.
Sorry, Alderman. Just testing.
Thank you.
On, on number seven, um, a little frustrating that we only got one, one bid, and then we get all these robust bids on all these other items and we only get one bid here. And then we say the bid received was in the amount of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, which is slightly under the es, engineer's estimate of sixty-two thousand, oh, eight, six. So, either the sixty-two, oh, eight, six is supposed to be sixty-two, eight, oh, six, or we've got the wrong numbers in here.
I, I think it's, it's, it's per square yard, I think we estimated ninety-six point five cents, so, you know, we anticipate, typically, we try to increase three percent or four percent of last year bid to come up with an estimate, but the contractor had, you know, ninety-seven cents per square yard compared to what we had estimated, so that's-
We're getting seal coating at our plant for less than we did last year, just so you know.
But this, uh, for the past three years, uh, you know, his, it's been around like eighty-five to, you know, ninety-seven, so again, the asphalt prices have not come down and that's, seal coating does use a portion of that asphalt emulsion, so the prices have been pretty steady.
I think the question, though, is, is your number of your engineer's estimate of sixty-two, oh, oh, eighty-six wrong?
Or should we be saying slightly above?
Should it be sixty-two, eight, oh, six?
It'll be slightly above, yeah.
So, which is slightly above the engineer's estimate, okay. And the one bidder, is it just not a popular project?
No, it, it's the GSB ADI product, you know, like, uh, he's the, that's the only company who has the license in the Chicago land, so it's, it's, if more companies apply for that product, then they can, they can, uh, you know, bid on this job, so they've been doing it for the past two years, uh, with the city.
Why is that product spet?
We used to, like, you know, previously, five, six years ago, we used to use another product which had a lot of sand in it, and we had a lot of problems with that, those sandings to get into the catch basins, and then eventually in the, in the spring months, we had to clean all those. So, we tried to use this product which is much faster and much more, uh, uh, has much more adhesive compared to the sand, and it's done like in an hour or so, and it works equally the same, so that's why we switched to GSB ADI, less intrusive, but effectively, more effective, uh, than what you have.
Shouldn't we then bid this as a sole source, not bid it?
Well, when you go out for bid, though, you don't know how many contractors have a license, right?
Right, yeah, so we, we had to do a public bid.
But I thought you said this was the only guy who had it for Chicago.
But next year we do it, there could be five people with a license from the- But next year we do it, there could be five people with a license from the state to do it.
It's a state license or it's a, it's a, it's a product license?
Product license.
I think it's, I think it's a product license.
Okay.
I think if we find out though there's a sole source, next year we'll do it differently.
Okay, and it wasn't sole source in the past few years when we used these guys?
No.
Last year, we had two people pick that.
Okay. All right, well, let's just keep an eye on that.
It may not be necessary. One of the reasons that we started to use this product was we weren't happy with the surface mix that has been coming out lately. And, but we have, we have been successful this year in using the mix that we want to see on the roadway, so we may not need to do the sealing in the near future.
Is this the Gultra mix?
Gultra.
Okay.
How often do we have to seal then with the old asphalt mix?
You like to hit them after a year to three years, after they've been paved, three years at the most.
And then how often after that?
We try to stop it right at that point.
So you only seal it once?
Right, just to stop it from that premature-
At first breaking down on the surface?
Right.
Which lets the frost in, okay.
But with the new mix, we probably won't have to do that anymore.
I just have a general question, Ramish. On item number six, the low bid is D-Lan construction. I know, I know most of the other names on there, I'm just not familiar. Is that a new one to Lake Forest?
No, I mean, they're based in Walk Keegan. They worked with us the year before. So when we did the 2008 sidewalk, they did the Convy sidewalk, so they got our bid. So they were, they were pretty good and our staff did inspect their jobs and they were pretty, pretty helpful with the residents.
Okay. And then item number four, the low bid Elmwood, that's another one I'm not familiar with.
Right, that's the first time they're working in the, in Lake Forest. We did check the references. They are huge and like Northbrook has used it for past three years, Lake Moore has used them consistently. So they're a huge outfit, it's just that they never worked in Lake Forest. And as you can see, the mayo was like $1,500, the second lowest bid, so.
Extremely close, yeah.
Right.
I'd just like to make a comment that this looks great. I know it's a lot of money and probably for council, but you have, we're still taking advantage of very favorable contracting prices. The projects are coming in under budget and you've got multiple bidders on, on all the ones except for the asphalt one, which is, there's a good reason for that. So I'd like to say congratulations, good job and thank you.
Yeah, and the consistent formats are very helpful.
Yeah. So, thanks.
And I'd make a motion to approve the consent.
I'll second.
So roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumman.
Aye.
Alderman Nobit.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Hennerhand.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
AKA, donate some motion carries.
Thank you, Beth.
That was approved with the changes made, right, on the minutes and on the number seven.
Our next item on the agenda is ordinances and the first one we have is a consideration of ordinance amending various sections 42-2 through 42-12, 42-40 and 42-65 through 42-73 of the Lake Forest Code pertaining to the tree preservation and landscaping for the purpose of reflecting a recent change in staff responsibilities and other updates. This is for final approval presented by Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is before you for a second reading. You first saw this at the first council meeting in May. As I noted then, you know, substantial changes are proposed as part of this. This amendment was initiated because of the need to amend the ordinance to reflect the recent shift of the forestry section from Public Works to the Parks and Recreation Department. So the language throughout the ordinance has changed to reflect that shift. I'm going to skip order here. The third is Emerald Ashbore was specifically called out in the section on pests and infestations. And then second, or third, I'm sorry, staff recommended that the definition of heritage trees be changed from 25 inches to 20 inches. The council had some discussion about whether 20 inches was small enough and for comparison purposes, I did at the last meeting show you the inch, the, the tree size when measured at diameter breast height above the ground. For these communities, permits are required for trees of this size. Originally, Lake Forest was at the forefront with our tree preservation ordinance. Our heritage tree size now really is larger than some of the other communities. So staff feels strongly that a reduction to 20 inches is appropriate. I will let you debate among yourselves. Staff certainly would, would support a further reduction to 18 inches if the council feels, feels that's appropriate. I did take the opportunity at the suggestion of City Attorney Marlo Del Persio to add one more change since you saw this at first reading. Ms. Del Persio reminded me that not too long ago, we had an issue where we had a situation where there was not enough room to erect tree protection fencing and we tried to get the petitioner to place mulch or plywood on the ground to protect the roots of the neighbor's tree because there wasn't enough room for fencing. Because it wasn't specifically in the ordinance, the petitioner was not willing to do that. So I thought it was a good addition. Thank you for the reminder. That was added and that added language is on page 58 of the ordinance. So if you find it appropriate to do so, it will be appropriate to grant final approval of this ordinance this evening. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Well, on the last one, I have a question on protecting the trees. And I'm looking at the work on Western Avenue with the trees and there's absolutely no protection whatsoever. They're digging them, they're breaking up concrete on top of the roots, they're driving rollers on them and there, and here we have an ordinance that we want the citizens to follow and our own construction is not taking into account those trees at all. And many of them, we, you know, suddenly they decided they just cut some down and I've had a lot of residents asking about that, that, you know, we're requiring them when they put an addition on their house and they have to fence it off, we have main trees down the street that we're not paying attention to at all. So I question putting this extra in there when we don't follow through at all on the, our own rules and our own trees that the taxpayers are paying for.
And the Western Avenue project was a much larger project in scope and there was some thought that some of those trees would need to be replaced and were in poor condition. I don't know whether-
Well, we trimmed a lot of them up and then we ended up cutting them down. I mean, it seems to be kind of an inconvenience, I guess, the trees got in the way, but certainly in any protection of the trees, even some of the new, you know, smaller trees that we went through and put in, there's been no protection around them whatsoever from the standpoint of any construction, none.
Right. I think you're right. For the most part, those trees which were identified were, were taken out.
Well, I understand that some of them went out in the, the train station, but we lost a lot of the locuses along Western Avenue that seemed to be there and then they disappeared. And I understand that, but for the ones that we're keeping, we've not protected at all. That's the, the point, that we're requiring a lot of protection, but when it comes to our own project, we're not doing that.
I agree. I think we'll have the contractor take a look at it. For the most part though, for the trees which we have taken out or the ones we are trying to protect, we try to keep the curb as much as we can and at every point, we are consulting with our city forester again to ensure that these trees can survive, but we'll, we'll have it take again, second look at our project, remaining on the project to make sure-
The trees that came out by the train station, were those dead or?
No, the, the way the, they were projecting is like in another two to three years, they might, you know, they might die. And we thought like instead of replacing a few of them, because they're all in a symmetrical fashion, that it's, it's good to replace all of them right now. And that's why they did for the past weekend on those trees.
There were a lot of questions about that.
Right.
Right, and I think originally our intent was to try and save them, preserve them. Unfortunately, in retrospect, we probably should have said, you know what, they only have two to three years left to go anyways and there's a high probability that within six months of the construction, they're going to start to deteriorate and then people are going to say, why didn't you change them at the time of construction and so forth? We probably should have identified them right from the start as it's time to replace them and, and start afresh, but we, you know.
Cause I agree, I agree with that. Those trees needed to be, you know, they're growing the wrong way, the railroad tracks and the safety issues and everything else. That's not a problem, but it's the ones that we're looking at saving that we're, we're just not really doing anything with. I mean, they were compacting to pour the sidewalks on them. Today, driving up and down within less than 18 inches of the roots, they were, you know, right at the edge of the roots.
Right. Again, most of the trees on the west side, Alderman Luby, I think, you know, the root system is actually going north and south because obviously, you know, on the west side, the building is there. So those, those are the same things with the train station. The roots are pretty much going north and south. That's why they were able to survive, but we'll try to put some planks and-
Hopefully they're going to survive. I'm just saying we require it for the homeowner and yet our project, we don't, we don't do anything. That's, that's my concern.
No.
Point taken.
I would urge the council to reduce the diameter size from 20 inches to 18 inches. I think we should take whatever steps we possibly can to protect the trees in this beautiful city. So I would make that suggestion. That would tie us with Libertyville for last place instead of being that far out. Is it too dramatic to go more or why wouldn't we want to be more in line with the, the list?
I'd support that too. Do we have a major issue with this?
Just for clarification, in the front yards and corner side yards, trees 10 inches or larger require permits. Heritage trees are trees that require permits for removal if they're located in the rear or side yards.
And what's this list?
This list is from these communities, permits are required for these trees. In many cases, the permits are required simply to, not necessarily to preserve the trees as to require replacement plantings. From the staff perspective, either 20 inches or eight inches, we feel is a good step. I think with, with some staffing reductions, we don't want to make a dramatic change. We want to assess where we're at. But particularly with Emerald Ashbore, there's a potential that we're going to lose more trees. So having the opportunity to go out and look at trees that are 18 inches or 20 inches as opposed to just those that are 25 and larger, really gives the staff an opportunity to have a discussion with the homeowner, perhaps to give them different advice than a tree removal contractor might have. And importantly, to, to at least be able to respond to questions from neighbors when we get those. So staff is comfortable with either 18 inches or 20 inches at this time and within the next 12 or 18 months, if, if there's a problem, we can certainly come back to the council.
Do we have enough folks in, well, I guess now it's the same department before, it used to be Peter Gordon, his guys running around. Do we have enough folks who can cover the whole community and do that?
Actually, the, for the tree permits on private property, that is handled by Community Development. We do have a certified arborist on staff. So yes, we feel that it's important enough that we will make sure that we're able to handle this reduction. We don't expect significant numbers, but it's one or two of those trees that we see that are at 23 inches that we can't even go in and look at or have a conversation with the property owner. So I don't think the numbers are high, but it, it at least gives us the ability to open that conversation.
We used to go out and tag dead trees as well, right? Whether it's a certain size or just dead trees? How do we, how does that end up?
We tag trees that are infested with Dutch elm disease. We may end up doing something similar with Emerald Ashbore. We don't tag dead trees on private property. We don't require those trees to be removed.
Unless it's out.
Correct.
Kathy, just ask, obvious question. If there's a tree that's a nuisance, is there any charge from the city to remove a tree that's infested with Dutch elm or Emerald Ash? Does the city just permit that?
Correct. Disease trees, dead trees, hazardous trees, there is no fee for the permit.
I think you changed your idea then, with 18 inches, it sounds like it makes more sense now.
I'll make a motion to approve with the staff recommended change to 18 inches.
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Alderman Grumman.
Aye.
Alderman Nobit.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Hennerhand.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
AKA, donate some motion carries.
Thank you, Beth. Our next item on the agenda is a consideration of an ordinance amending section 42-2-1200 of chapter 40, traffic of the city code of Lake Forest 1971, revising schedule two for stop signs by installing a stop sign on westbound Field Drive, cul-de-sac intersection with Chicago Bears Private Drive. This is a first reading and final approval presented by Ramish.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. In front of you, we are requesting to install a stop sign for the city code. Any traffic calming devices has to be installed with the approval of city council and stops sign is a traffic calming device. What we're looking at is, this is our municipal services building. Again, this is Microsoft Bank, so due credit has to be given to them using their map to show municipal services facilities is right here. This is Field Drive. People usually come in and then go to our facility. This is the private Bears Drive. Right now, all the, most of the Bears staff do follow going around the cul-de-sac to head, head out of the Field Drive, but some of them do like to cut across, do cut across, which again, they, they were able to do that before when nobody was, nobody was around and, you know, and, and there was no development around them and they had the option to do that, but a few of our employees have noticed, you know, some, some scary moments, so they brought that topic back to the traffic safety, traffic safety committee debated it and then decided that to install a stop sign in the right of way where, again, we did talk to the Bears personnel too, saying that, you know, there's going to be a stop sign and they were all for it. So we are requesting to install a stop sign in the city right of way so that-
It's going to help them win more games. That's good to me.
What are the warrants here, please? We get, we get so many requests for stop signs and, and one of the, you know, the reason we don't have stop signs all over town is because we have traffic counts that we look at. How many, how can we possibly be at the numbers that would warrant a stop sign at this intersection?
One of the warrants for the traffic, one of the warrants for the stop sign is not only just the traffic count, but also the safety. I think that, that's where this is coming to it. It's not so much, yeah, we agree that we are not meeting the traffic counts, but it's, again, nobody wants to see anything happening, it's just that there were a couple of close calls and that's one of the reasons why this was brought into the traffic safety.
You're basically going to put one at the top of Football Drive, right?
No, no, it's going to be in the city right of way, right here.
It's going to be where?
It's going westbound.
Yeah.
So that-
Right now, there is currently a yield sign that is at the end of Football Drive on the Field Drive.
Right, so you're going to put one at the end of Field Drive for people turning on to, onto the circle?
That's correct.
Which makes perfect sense because you have two roads coming together and neither one of them has a stop sign.
That's correct.
That's correct. And we had a yield sign there, but it wasn't as effective, I think, as everyone would like. And so I think you're correct, Alderman Marsh. We typically will do warrants, but in this situation, the only other option that was suggested by Bears personnel was to have an officer sitting out there and quite frankly-
Why don't we try that for a while?
Well, we have tried that for a while, but the problem is, is that it works for a little while and then we have the problem. And there's a lot more traffic now going north around the circle into the municipal services building and that's what's caused the, the problem, if you will. And so the, the Bears approached us, we said that this would be a good solution, but they want it on the city right of way, rather on their own property, which they could do tomorrow. They could actually, we had originally installed it on their property and they asked it to be on the city right of way so that we could then actually write tickets for violation of the stop sign.
Need to put a camera there.
Yeah.
And also, it's also for the safety of the residents who are coming to the municipal services buildings, so city employees and the residents. And then other thing is a lot of pedestrians. CPA, you know, in the lunch hour, we see a lot of pedestrian activity on there, so it's, it's a safe. We, we told them that they're going to go to the Super Bowl next year.
Okay, if they can win more games, I'll be in favor.
Motion away, first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The votes? Need a roll call vote to pass the ordinance.
Motion to grant final approval.
Second.
Alderman Grumman.
Aye.
Alderman Nobit.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Hennerhand.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
AKA, donate some motion carries.
Thank you, Beth. Our next item on the agenda is a consideration of an ordinance amending chapter 40 of the city code to adopt state regulations regarding bridges and railroad signals. This is a first reading presented by Deputy Chief Glenn Bermanster.
Good evening again. This ordinance change comes as a result of the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee that was- Safety Enhancement Committee, that was in charge of identifying both vehicular and pedestrian safety enhancements at both train stations, reduce the number, frequency of accidents. The committee asked me to look into ordinance changes or additions to our local ordinance. Paragraphs A and B are what is the language that is contained in there now under forty-one, ten, eleven. We are seeking to add paragraphs C, D, and E, which mirror the state statute with regard to this situation. The bulk of the ordinance comes under C, where no pedestrian shall enter, remain upon, or traverse over a railroad grade crossing, or pedestrian walkway crossing, a railroad track when an audible bell or clearly visible electric or mechanical signal device is operational, giving warning of the presence, approach, passage, or departure of a railroad train. As you know, we've had some incidents in the past, very fairly recent past, regarding pedestrians and trains, so we think this is appropriate to bring this to our local ordinance. This would also allow us to bring it to our administrative hearings by adopting it by local ordinance. Paragraph D provides, also matches the state language, it provides for minimum fines of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the first offense, or twenty-five hours of community service, and then five-hundred dollars for subsequent offenses. And then paragraph E, the state grants us local authorities to cover those fines.
These are effective, so I, this is a great idea.
What's the current rule? First here. What's the current fine?
The fine, if we go with state charge, I believe the fine is up to the judge, because it's not stated for paragraphs A and B. Generally, it's a seventy-five dollar bond, and the judge can set usually between fifty and about seven-hundred-and-fifty dollar fine for those. We can't bring it to our administrative hearings, because we don't have, for paragraph C, other paragraphs cover crossing around gates, and paragraph A is for bridges, we don't have any gate signals for bridges here in town.
Are we finding that we're giving a lot of these tickets?
We're not giving a lot of these tickets. We have given one recently, I'm aware of. We've done lots of campaign blitzes for safety, railroad safety, we've gotten assistance from the railroads, other communities have lent officers, so we can hit peak times, we've given out warnings, we've given out literature, and by passage of this ordinance, then we can bring it to the next level, and we'll continue with citations.
Can I just ask you a general area question about trespassing? I've, I've been spending a lot, as you can see my face over at West Campus at baseball games, on the varsity field, and I know that there's some openings there, where there's been some arguments between the parents of where the kids can go, all the foul balls, 'cause we lose about a bucket a game, that go on the train tracks. Why do they have those open areas, if, it says no trespassing anyway? They're not even, you know, gated up. We were confused of where you can go and grab a baseball, or where you can't, 'cause they're, they're not really locked up.
Yeah, there's no trespassing along any of the railroad right of way there. I believe that location you're talking about is the high school property at, at West Campus?
It's the varsity field at, at the, the West Campus, yeah.
That, we have identified that location as additional no trespassing signs for the railroad, that's sort of step two of this, this being step one for that. We also have identified areas for additional no trespassing signs along the bike paths.
And we're, as, as parents, we're telling everyone, don't go over there.
Don't go.
I mean, but it'd be, it'd be helpful.
We really should be looking at a fence on a life safety program, to fence that if it's off the high school property.
Well, it's fenced, but there's some openings.
Well, that's what I mean, two years, close those, yeah.
I brought this up at the Transportation Safety Enhancement Committee meeting, because my younger son played, played four years there, and I was amazed at how many ti, we sent our kids over there. And when we had the committee, I said, oh my goodness, what are we doing? Why are we sending kids over here on these railroad tracks? And I think, you know, we had the school district one fifteen at the table, and we, we did tell them, please, you know, tell the coaches, tell the kids, tell both sides, do not go on those railroad tracks.
Yeah, sometimes it's a visiting team, they don't know.
Yeah, if we lose, you know, a ball, you know, a dollar here, a dollar there, it's fine, but, you know, life is, you can't replace, so...
Why doesn't one fifteen just put up gates?
Close the fence.
Close the fence.
They need to close the fence.
That's my question. Yeah, we need, we need some help there to get, you know, one fifteen, and the help also with the parents, with the baseball teams, and, you know, a suggestion for years, and, you know, Alderman Swarthout out there sits there, and his son played as well, but it may be some type of a backstop, I mean, just a little bit more, no, I understand, a netting or something that, that helps, because it certainly is an enticement for kids to go on out there.
It's just, it's just an area I just, it just came to mind, so...
No, we, we did, we did speak about it, and I think we gotta definitely beef that up and fix that, because it's, it's certainly a dangerous situation.
Fair. I'd like to make the motion to accept.
It's first reading.
I'll second.
This is a, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda this evening is a consideration of report, a recommendation from the zoning board of appeals to grant a variance from the setback requirements for a replacement accessory structure at three-twelve Granby Road. This is a first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval, presented by Assistant Planner Megan O'Neill.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This property, three-twelve Granby Road, is located on the north side of Granby Road, between McKinley and Wisconsin Avenue. The area was platted in the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, and many of the structures in this neighborhood do not meet setback requirements due to the age of the structure, and changes to setback regulations since the buildings were constructed. This request is for a replacement two-car garage. There is an existing one-point-five car garage that's in disrepair on the property, and the homeowners wish to tear that garage down and replace it with a two-car garage. The practical difficulty in constructing a garage that meets the setback requirements for the GR2 district are primarily the location of the existing house that was built prior to our adoption of a zoning code, the existing driveway, and mature, mature vegetation on this side of the property. So in order to build a garage that is functional for the family, the owner petitioned the zoning board of appeals on May twenty-fourth for a variance from the setback requirements for accessory structures. Currently, the garage that's on the property is sighted about a foot off the property line. The current proposal places the garage four-point-five feet off of the property line, an encroachment of one-point-five feet. In order to maneuver a car into the garage, the petitioner is also proposing to push the garage towards the rear of the property, setback five feet, which is a five-foot encroachment. The zoning board supported this request due to the unique situations on the lot. There are findings in support of the variance attached to the ordinance, I believe it's on page sixty-six of your packets. No one from the public came to the meeting to provide testimony to the zoning board of appeals, and the board voted unanimously to recommend approval to the council. The recommendation this evening for you is to waive first reading and grant final approval of the ordinance to allow the detached garage to be set back no less than four-point-five feet from the west property line, and no less than five feet from the north property line, as shown on the site plan on the screen. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I had a question. Looking at that picture that you have up here, with, with the concrete patio block, about halfway across the apron of the proposed garage, I'm having trouble visualizing how a car can really get in and out of that garage, unless you're gonna be driving over the patio block. Is that what their plan is?
Alderman Whitman, that, that question actually came up at the zoning board meeting. It is the intention of the owner to remove the patio and reconfigure the driveway to appropriately construct a driveway to enter the garage.
Okay, so is the plan then, that we're, so is that, is that not the plan, then, that we're supposed to be passing on, or is that the plan we're supposed to be...
That is the plan. It's, it's merely a matter of changing the patio material to driveway material to allow access to the garage.
Okay, and then, also in the packet, you had another picture. I guess it was called the site plan showing zoning compliance, which seems to move the garage a little closer to the house, and at the cost of removing maybe a little more of the, of the patio. Is, is that what we're talking about now, in order to get it compliant, to, just, that's the picture, just to...
That's correct. If, this is an image of a garage that complies to the setbacks for GR2, which is a six-foot side yard setback and a ten-foot rear yard setback. In this configuration, a car cannot maneuver into the far door of the garage. In the proposed location, they've, they've moved the garage, they've kept the garage, I should say, as far from the property lines as they could. They've actually shifted the garage door over so that the cars can maneuver in and out of the garage, while still maintaining a setback from the property line.
Okay, so in this one, they say that they cannot get that vehicle in and out of the right side of the garage?
The proposed plan there, Stu, I think is not in the packet.
Right, that's why I asked her the question about that first.
That's in the packet, but the proposed plan with the, with the, with the patio shaved isn't in the packet.
Right. I, I have one comment on the, on the content of the, I guess, the presentation. The word hardship, in this instance, and this is coming off of my timeline, HBC, a hardship occurs when a property owner owns a property, and then a change is made to the zoning, which then, so is this the owner of the property from when the house was built? Or is this a recent owner?
This is the current owner. I do not believe they were the same owner as when the house was built. I do not know.
The use of hardship is important, because it provides rights to the landowner that would not belong to someone who bought it with. It would be, normally, the word encumbrance would be used here, rather than hardship.
Right.
When a hardship's the reflection of a code change after purchase, and that gives you rights within, I think it's important to note, because that word was misused a lot with HPC, and it can lead to other things.
Megan, just a quick question in respect of, hopefully, if you make that nine-thirty train.
Nine-twenty-four, actually.
Moving the garage further away from the lot itself, is that not correct?
That's correct.
So, before it was on the lot line, now we're moving it further away from neighbors, is that correct?
That is correct. It is...
And the plan itself takes into account the maneuverability of getting the car into the garage, so we're increasing the space, allowing it to be maneuverable to accomplish this.
That's correct.
And no complaints from the neighbors, in letter or testimony.
Correct.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to waive first reading.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Grumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Novick.
Aye.
Alderman Whitman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Marsh.
Aye.
Alderman Hammerhand.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
A.T.H. no names, motion carries.
Nine-twenty-four, you can make it, Megan. Almost.
Don't cross that gate, though.
Alderman Whitman will give you a ride home if you miss the train.
Do not go over the track.
And Alderman Moore will be riding next to him.
I didn't know about the nine-twenty-four.
She needs to tell us before she starts.
The next one's at ten-twenty-four.
All right. Keeping with that, our next item on the agenda is consideration of a recommendation to approve the final development plan ordinance and the final platted subdivision for the White Stable Vineyard Plan Preservation Subdivision proposed for the southwest corner of Route sixty and Ridge Road, commonly known as the Riley Property. This is first reading, presented by Kathy Cerniak, Director of Community Development. And you don't have a train at nine-twenty-four, I take it?
I don't know, I may wanna go out of town. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. This is a recommendation from the plan commission to the city council. I wanted to step back just for a, a moment and review a timeline. Former Alderman Swarthout, his wife and his representative not only have been sitting here tonight for a few hours, but they've been working on this project for more than a year as well. Actually, our work, staff's work with Mr. Swarthout and his team started at least a year before the November eighteenth, two thousand and nine date. In November of two thousand and nine, the plan commission, after two public hearings, made a recommendation to the city council for tentative approval of the subdivision plat. The city council, at the end of last year, accepted that recommendation, and also approved tentative approval of the subdivision plat. On March sixteenth, after finalization of the various plans and documents, the plan commission held another public hearing, and recommended to the city council tonight, final approval of the subdivision plat, and the associated special use permit. Those two items together will be approved, if you choose to do so, through the tenant, through the final development plan ordinance, that's included in your packet. Tonight, you're going to be asked to consider several actions, but I also wanted to lay out for you related activities that the council will be asked to consider over the next couple of months. Tonight, the council is considering the recommendation from the plan commission, as I mentioned, that would approve final plat and the final development plan ordinance that is before you tonight for first reading. As a follow-up to that, there are also two proposing ordinances for special service areas that are also before you tonight. And as part of those proposing ordinances, public hearings would also need to be opened and closed this evening. I will talk more about those, since they are items that follow this one. Just to look forward, if the council takes action on those three items tonight, then at your next meeting, June twenty-first, we would return and ask the city council to consider final approval of the development plan ordinance and the plat of subdivision, and the establishing ordinance for the school SSA. Following that, we would expect to be back before you at your meeting in July, July nineteenth, for consideration of the establishing ordinance for the infrastructure SSA and related actions to approve the bonds. For anyone watching who may not be familiar, White Stable Vineyard subdivision is proposed for a forty-seven acre property, more commonly known as the Riley Property, or the corner where pumpkins used to be sold. It is located south of Route sixty, and west of Route forty-one, and west of Ridge Road. The proposed White Stable Vineyard development is consistent with the zoning for this property, the R4 zoning. No variances of any kind are requested. The density of thirty-four lots is permitted under the R4 zoning. The, although the minimum lot size in the R4 zoning district is sixty thousand square feet, this property is located within the historic residential and open space district, which requires a special use permit specifically to encourage flexibility in development types to preserve both natural and historic resources. This project does both of those. When the plan commission reviewed this project, they noted several key fe, key features. Just a, a couple highlights. The plan commission recognized that, that this development was unique in that it would actually preserve agricultural use on this site, which is essentially the last farm in the core of Lake Forest, that it would result in the preservation of three historic structures, one at its current location, and the other two would be moved. It would result in preservation of over fifty percent of the site as open space. It would create what I believe is the first green neighborhood on the North Shore, through a variety of techniques from bio swales, to use of pervious surface for the road, and the encouragement of green features in the individual homes as well. And it would also create a unique housing opportunity. Although this is property in the R4 district, as I mentioned, it does not provide all sixty thousand square foot lots. It provides lots in a range of size, the sm- It provides lots in a range of size, the smallest being just under a third of an acre, the largest being over an acre in size. Homes in this development would range from about 3,000 feet to 4,000 feet. We do hear from realtors that perhaps the city has enough 60,000 square foot lots, so this does offer a different product and one that really picks up on some cutting-edge themes that we're seeing across the country, such as the concept of an urban farm. Lake Forest, the Plan Commission recognized and remarked that Lake Forest has often been at the cutting edge, doing things like Market Square, Middle Fork Farm. This is, the Plan Commission saw this as another opportunity for the city really to create a very unique product and essentially put Lake Forest on the map once again. One final feature of this that the Plan Commission recognized is they felt strongly that it was good to send a message that Lake Forest is open for business. Just very quickly to give you a graphic illustration of the open space, again, over 50% of the site is preserved as open space. A good chunk of that will be planted in vineyard. There will be orchards planted in some locations. There's an existing pond. Additional onsite detention will be added, as well as bio swales. Natural vegetation and the natural rural streetscape will be maintained along Ridge Road and the existing wooded perimeter will remain between White Stable Vineyard and the subdivision to the west. On page 81 of your packet, there are a number of conditions. The Plan Commission worked through an extensive set of conditions, and I won't go over all of those, but they do speak to what needs to happen before the recording of the plat, during construction, after construction, on an ongoing basis. Just in summary, they require the various legal documents that we will need to work through with the city engineer and the city attorney, require such things as where construction traffic will be permitted and where it won't, tree protection, the payment of appropriate fees to the city. They address what if. If the vineyard isn't successful, the Plan Commission has provided for what will happen to the outlots. They clarify that this development fully develops this property, no additional density is allowed, so those outlots could not be further subdivided or could not be further developed. But if the vineyard wasn't successful, they could be and would need to be maintained either as for another agricultural use or for open space. One final condition I wanted to mention is that, as was done with, I believe, the Stonebridge subdivision, there is a requirement that prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, that the owner would need to submit a document verifying that the owner has been provided with a copy of both the Declaration of Covenants and information on the special service areas that apply to this development. If you choose to do so this evening, it will be appropriate to grant first reading of this ordinance. As I mentioned, we would bring it back. The Plan Commission did forward a recommendation in support of this development, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Kathy, I just have two general questions. One, and maybe this is a page that Bob took out of the packet or added to, but it was six to one, and I couldn't find the one person in their opinion of why they voted against it.
It was a six to one vote. The one vote in opposition, there were a couple comments by that particular commissioner throughout the course of discussion, and I think in the end, as he explained his vote in opposition, he questioned whether the lots were appropriately sized and thought that perhaps larger lots may be more appropriate for this development.
Okay. As you know, on something dear to our hearts, with Alderman Morse and I, we're dealing with the Eloa Farm and the neighborhood over there regarding a special use permit and our worries about when neighbors move in after the fact and what is expected and what's not versus loud music, traffic, parking, liquor license, all of this, how are we building around this so that the people understand when they're moving in that it's not going to be somewhere where there's going to be 75 events and huge weddings with tents?
One key difference between Eloa Farm and Middle Fork Farm and White Stable Vineyard and the vineyard, the stable, is that Eloa Farm is owned by the city. It is a community resource located on residential property, and that's why we're going through the special use process. In this case, the city will not have any ownership of these structures. The stable and the cottage, which will be located up in the northeast corner, will be privately owned. They will be under the ownership and the control of the homeowners' association. So essentially, they're making their own rules in this case. So it is very different. And as new owners come in and buy, they will be provided with a copy of the Declaration of Covenants.
Thank you.
But will we have a limit on the use of that way, that it won't be used for outside events or anything like that?
There are some references in the condition. For instance, no retail use can occur in that building. And again, the homeowners' association, the Declaration of Covenants, will specify how that can be used, but it cannot be used as a commercial use, as a commercial facility.
Kathy, there are a lot of very good things about this. I want to clarify just a few things. It says that the outlots will be used for the vineyards, but if they are determined to be, that agricultural use is determined to be unsuccessful, then those lots can be all planted with alternative crops. Who will be making the decision about whether the vineyard is successful or unsuccessful?
The outlot will be, again, under the ownership of the homeowners' association.
Okay.
So the homeowners' association will be in control, and I believe that condition is written to say that alternative crops could be planted with the approval of the city, or that area could be planted as a natural area. If you want more information about exactly how the vineyard or how the winery will operate, I know that Mr. Swarthout will be happy to provide further information.
Okay. My concern is that we don't end up in some no man's land of a, truly an unsuccessful project, but there's really no decision, so the outlots just become an eyesore or some sort of, you know, unproductive area that the residents aren't going to like.
As the Plan Commission discussed that, they felt strongly because the outlots and the stable and the coach house will be in the ownership of the people who live there or the people who own that property. It's a real different situation than, say, some of the commercial properties we see right now where no one mows the grass. The owners are nowhere around. So the Plan Commission felt strongly that the control is in the right place to assure that proper upkeep would occur.
Is there a budget? Are there CAM charges for the common areas, common area maintenance charges for the...
The homeowners' association and the Declaration of Covenants would need to cover, their fees would need to cover all of those costs, as any homeowners' association would need to do.
And there were a couple of things I just wanted to ask questions about based on what we heard in HPC.
On that issue still, about the use of the outlots, I think it's wonderful that there's a commitment that they'll remain as open space. I think that's truly one of the very attractive aspects of this project. But the ordinance nonetheless still has a very general provision regarding amendment to the ordinance that allows for some amendment, subject to the standards and limitations of the zoning code and so on and so forth. So my concern is that the lock-in of open space isn't necessarily locked in because it is always going to be subject, it seems, to some sort of later amendment. So is there a way to lock it in with even more certainties that it can't be amended sometime later if somebody wants to come back?
I'm going to ask for the city attorney's assistance on that.
Yes, members of the council, on the amendment to the ordinance, in fact, all of our ordinances are always subject to amendment. That's something that we can't lock in. Couple of things on that. First, in order to amend it, we'll have to go through the full zoning process, which means a public notice, public hearing, consideration by the Plan Commission, and then ultimately the City Council. So there are multiple procedural steps to get there. Secondly, there are going to be some belts and suspenders with the original ordinance. The CCNRs, which ultimately will be prepared, reviewed, and approved by the city before being recorded along with the plat, will have a number of the same points in it as are reflected in the ordinance. Those are going to have to be amended as well if any change in the ordinance is to have any meaning, because otherwise they're still going to be restricted by the CCNRs. So there are multiple procedural protections to preserve what is currently being contemplated, but I don't think either there is the ability nor, quite frankly, the wisdom in making this fixed forever. Things do change. We need to have some ability to make those modifications, but we want to make sure that they're going to be done prudently and after proper deliberation. I think the procedures that are in place will allow for both of those.
I did have some questions about the establishment of the SSA regarding the infrastructure facilities, and it really seems to be totally tied to even the first issue, but we're not quite there yet, so I can save my questions.
Yeah, just a couple of clarifications. When we heard the presentation in whatever fashion we did in HPC, I forgot the language being used. Are the homes all still going to be geothermal?
It is the...
It was a requirement for the homeowners at the time of the HPC thing. Now, it's a suggestion, or it's weakened on that, or... They were all going to be geothermal homes. We were given no approval, but, and they were going to be smaller at the time, too? 2,500 to 3,000?
It certainly is our hope that they will all be geothermal homes. It's not a mandated requirement in the homeowners' association covenant, but we strongly suggest that all those homes become geothermal homes. Absolutely.
Okay.
But it, we went back and forth with the architect, land planner, as well as some of the structural people we dealt with, and felt that the mandate that within the covenant would become problematic. But as we are learning, even in today's news, that it appears to be the, certainly the wise direction, and we hope that everyone will take advantage of that. Because we do feel it's really the future of all, the heating and cooling in homes in the future.
Okay. And this is from memory, but I have a recollection of them being 2,500 to 3,000 and other 3,000 to 4,000 or whatever.
No, no, it's really based on, we took the model of the city's own bulk ordinance, and so we followed that rather than recreate the wheel. And so the largest, the smallest house, the smallest house could be, would be 3,000 feet. The largest could be, I think, in the 4,200 range. But it, but most likely they will be under that, given, given just the economics.
Okay.
But my guess is they'll probably be all under 32 to 3400.
Okay.
That sounds more like it.
Any other questions? If not, I retain the motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is a follow-up to the same, a consideration of an ordinance proposing the establishment of the White Stable Vineyard Special Service Area in the city of Lake Forest in support of educational facilities, ratifying the public notice, and providing for a public hearing and other procedures in connection therewith. This is a first reading and a desirable by the City Council final approval, presented again by Kathy Cerniak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first of two special service areas that are requested for this development. As with any subdivision over five lots, at least over the last 10 years, the first SSA requested is in support of District 67. We've, you've seen this come before you with the Middle Fork Farm subdivision, the Stonebridge subdivision, Amberly Woods. So this is something that's put in place. The city is not involved in negotiations between the developer and the school district about this SSA. The city is just the mechanism used to put the SSA in place. What the SSA does is allow that, allow new development in the community to contribute to the support of school facilities, based on the thought process that additional homes will result in increased need for school facilities. What is before you tonight is the step, is the proposing ordinance. SSAs are required to be put in place through, first, a proposing ordinance and then an establishing ordinance. In accordance with state law, the required publication of the notice has been done and has been sent to the property owners, currently the Riley Trust. It would be appropriate tonight to open the public hearing on this matter, hear any testimony, and close the public hearing. We have met with representatives of the Riley Trust, and it is our understanding that it is their expectation to submit documentation following your action tonight, waiving the 60-day waiting period, the 60-day notice period, and that would allow us to bring this special service area back to you at your next meeting with the final reading of the final development plan ordinance. So that is the school SSA, and I would be happy to answer any questions on that proposed SSA.
Should we do the public hearing before we do the ordinance?
No, we should be doing the ordinance first. Typically, our sequence is the proposing ordinance followed by the hearing, because the proposing ordinance calls for the hearing. The one, the one rub in this instance is that in order to meet the meeting schedule, the notice was published in advance of the proposing ordinance actually coming before the council, and that's why it's being asked as a ratification. So the proposing ordinance is ratifying the notice that has been already published, and that will be the entree for the public hearing to follow.
So for clarification, Vic, you want two votes and then open the public hearing?
Correct. We need the waiver, the first reading, the approval of proposing, and then the public hearing.
Kathy, I'm right in saying that this is the same SSA we went through with the other developments, that some of the other developments that we've done?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to waive first reading.
Second.
Call of favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries.
I need to go first.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Brumhouse.
Aye.
Alderman Novick.
Aye.
Alderman Whitman.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Morse.
Aye.
Alderman Hammerham.
Aye.
Alderman Luby.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
888, no names, the motion carries.
Motion, open the public hearing.
Second.
Call of favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is open, and we invite public testimony if there is any. Anyone here tonight for public testimony on this matter?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. The public testimony and the public hearing is now closed.
I would just like to applaud the developer on this creative approach, and I wish him all the success moving forward, if he's awake.
We still have the other SSA, right?
But we're not done yet. But wait.
In typical infomercial form, I guess I'll kick off the second special service area, and
Kathy can supplement.
Oops, I'm sorry.
The second special service area relates to the infrastructure financing for this development. Unlike the school one, which is fairly typical of our developments, this was the one that was missing in the page in your agenda, but it is in the agenda that was posted. It's just that the page is missing from the packet. This particular special service area, while similar in terms of its legal status, is actually different in terms of what we would customarily see. This is intended to be a financing vehicle for the infrastructure, largely because of the unique nature of this development. The request for some of the special service area financing has come forward. This is not a burden on the city in terms of its finances, in terms of its bond rating or in terms of its debt obligation. The city is really more or less a conduit to make sure that the financing can come through. It does permit the developer to take advantage of the taxing... can come through. It does permit the developer to take advantage of the taxing exempt rates that will come from this. It also provides a more certain mechanism for the ultimate collection of those taxes, so that some of these expenses can be more effectively amortized in completing the improvements. One of the other features of this special service area that is proposed is that it will have two components. One is a tax flow to pay off the bonds which would finance the improvements. A second is a tax flow that would allow for the maintenance of some of these improvements. With respect to the maintenance, the roadways and, well, the water and sewer are going to be city-owned and maintained. The roadway, which is actually going to be a public road, but in a slightly variance from our standard roadway width, is something that the city will be responsible for, but this development, rather than our general fund, will pay for. So that's what's before you. Again, one of the other...
Vic, could you just say that last point again?
Yeah. Most of our public roads, we pay for either out of our general funds or our roadway funds. In this instance, these will be public roads, but they will be paid for pursuant to a special maintenance tax imposed just on this development.
Because of that, so...
Because they are at variance from our standard roadway configuration.
They're paid favors.
There are a number of different features. I'll kick that over to Kathy or Tom if they wish to talk about that.
So for purposes of putting in these roads, who, how does this differ, if at all, in terms of where the ultimate cash is going to come from to pay for this infrastructure?
The cash will come, there's two sources of cash. There will be a bond issuance that the city will be the issuer of, but it will be backed solely by the property itself.
Tax lien, I think.
That's right. It's solely on the subdivision that's proposed. Those bonds will be paid off over time by the taxes that will be specially levied on this development. They can be prepaid at the time of closing as well, but that's not a requirement that's being contemplated. So that's one level of taxes. The other level of tax will be imposed by the city on an annual basis at whatever rate is deemed necessary to offset the anticipated costs for the infrastructure maintenance that we're going to be undertaking for the roadways. And again, the key thing there is that because these are roads that vary from the standard requirements of our, of our city requirements, we're going to have the cost of that borne by these taxpayers directly as opposed to by the city taxpayers as a whole.
So were there no SSA? Could you walk through that process? It's a rather basic question, I understand.
Were there no SSA, then the developer would likely go out for conventional financing. And one of the concerns has been that because of the delta in the interest rate, that would make some of the unique features of this development, particularly the predominance of open space and some of the other public amenities, more difficult to effect. And so they have requested the city to consider the special service area financing in order to take advantage of that delta between the private interest rate and what might be available through a tax exempt rate.
And have we reviewed, I did see in the materials that there is a statement that without this, the development becomes difficult to sustain. What, what we just call due diligence have we done to determine that the financial viability is in such jeopardy that we should, in a sense, partner with a private development for purposes of $7 million of infrastructure improvement?
We're not partnering, though.
Well...
Because if the developer defaults...
I think it's more appropriate to call this affronting.
Right.
Affronting, okay, okay. So what, getting back to, the real point of my question is our, let me just back up just a step. A few meetings ago, we were presented with a general concept of SSA for infrastructure development, and we had a dialogue here, and then it went off the radar screen. And we haven't seen that back as a general concept. What we now see is this SSA being specifically presented for this project. We are going from a general rule, maybe guidelines on how these things should be operated. We're not doing that. We're going right to the specific. And so one of my concerns is that process of jumping right to the specific without really having a format, a protocol for the city to use these kind of things. Maybe they're wonderfully valuable to allow projects to be developed, but I don't know what our thermometer is for, you know, awarding this kind of fronting mechanism. And I don't, I don't see it here, other than that, you know, there's some maybe difficulty in sustaining the project without the benefits of this. So getting back to my point is, what do we know about the finances to know that this project is in such jeopardy that if we didn't do this fronting, these things would not be viable, or the project wouldn't be viable?
Well, let me give an introduction to that, and then I'm going to perhaps ask representatives of the developer to offer some more detail on that. As far as the general policy that the council had talked about, I think that was of a slightly different character of special service areas. Those were for the smaller ones, where the city would actually be fronting its fund balances rather than going up for a bond. And in fronting its fund balances, I think those were the standards that were the part of the dialogue. When we're talking about bonding special service areas, I think in each instance, that's something that the council should always consider on an individual basis. And I think that's why that's being presented to you tonight, in the fashion it is, rather than before any formalization of the other policy that was being discussed. As far as what the barometer is with any special service area, it's always what the council thinks is in the best interest of the city. It's a legislative judgment that you're being asked to make. In this instance, I think that there was a request on the part of the developer because of the totality of circumstances, which include, among other things, the nature of the development, the nature of the economic times. But I think as far as the details, I'm going to offer that to be followed through by the development team.
You know, I would say my recollection is we had more than a sort of general discussion. And we talked specifically about this project. We talked about why we thought SSAs were something that the city should begin to consider. It was something that was widely used in other communities. It's something that the City of Lake Forest had generally resisted, but quite frankly, hadn't spent a lot of time on. It was viewed in this economic climate and this real estate market that, you know, we need to be doing all we can to encourage good projects. So, you know, I feel like there was a pretty significant discussion in front of the council, I don't remember exactly when the meeting was, about it, and specifically about this project, that we should, you know, go ahead and have staff work with the developer to come forward with something.
And again, I think that the portion of the discussion that may not have been fully developed was with the smaller special service areas, where the city's funds were being used as the revenue source as opposed to a bond proceed.
So the city's the guarantor on the bond?
No, no.
We're not...
No. The city is the issuer. All responsibility falls back on the properties. Within the special service area, it does not affect our debt limit. It does not affect our tax limitations.
If the homes don't sell, who's covering the bond?
That's going to be the risk of the bondholders.
I'm sorry?
That's the risk of the bondholders. It's not anything that falls back on the city or any of its general taxpayers. It is not a debt obligation of the city.
The developer's owner of the properties, until the developer sells the properties, is responsible for making the tax payments that are ultimately going to go fund the bonds.
Right.
We're helping the, just so I understand it, because I wasn't here for the earlier discussions.
Right.
The city has an opportunity to help the developer at no risk to itself.
That's correct.
Correct. To facilitate it with its clout, but not with its guarantee.
What the city is basically using is its ability to issue tax-free debt, federal tax-free debt on the interest. That usually results in a lower net interest rate for the borrowing of the funds. And it's that delta between what one would get in the commercial market versus what one can get through the tax-exempt bonds from a special service area that is the financial benefit of doing this. It's not a cost to the city. It is simply a means of facilitating the financing of the development.
Is this bond available for collateralization, for leveraging of other finances for the developer?
You know, it all depends on the overall financing package. It's not uncommon that a, let me say this, prior to the economic downturn, it was not uncommon that this type of financing would be calculated by a lender as part of the equity that a developer brought into the situation. Frankly, I don't know how they're looking at it anymore. So I'm not quite sure if it has that advantage, but it certainly still has the advantage of the interest rate delta.
And there's a, the interest rate that will ultimately go on this bond is not going to be the interest rate we would borrow it.
Right. It's going to be higher than our AAA GO rate.
It's going to be higher than what we borrow it.
But it's likely to be lower than the commercial rate.
Because it's not our credit. It's not being rated on our credit in any way whatsoever.
And...
The interest rates are so low. But lower than what the developer will be able to find in the commercial market.
And let me, let me add back to Alderman Whitman's comment about the due diligence. Frankly, from the city's perspective, I don't think we've done much hardcore due diligence as to the, you know, the whether it goes forward or not, you know, a but-for test. Rather, what we've depended on is the underwriter and the ultimate bond purchaser to do their due diligence that this is a viable project with this type of financing. And both the city and the developer have provided information with respect to the financing so that that due diligence could be done.
Well, but there's a statement in our materials that says...
And that has been the representation of the developer, so that's, that's why I did call them up.
So it's, okay, all right. Well, I think that's an important thing to develop, so...
The follow-up, the follow-up to your question for Vic, if there's a default, default goes to the bondholder, and the bondholders essentially have...
Lean on the property.
Right.
Right. They can, well, it's actually going to be the entire development, because to the extent that lots have been sold, what the special service area, in this instance, let me give you just an example. There are 34 lots that are going to be bearing the brunt of the tax. Each of them has their own separate tax liability. If one of them fails, the bondholders have the ability to foreclose on their property to recover any unpaid special service area tax. It's not just the outlots that are at risk, it's actually the individual homes. So each taxpayer, just like any of us, risks a tax foreclosure in the event they fail to make their special service area tax. That's the lean interest that the bondholders would be looking for as they move forward with the purchase of this and the ultimate purchase of the bond.
And what about the upkeep and maintenance of the roadways?
As far as the maintenance tax, the city likewise has the ability, now, the city's got the ability to put that tax on all of the properties, and if one of them falls short, we can simply increase the rate up to the 1% limit in order to ensure that we have adequate funds. If any of them fail to pay taxes, just as if someone fails to pay any of their regular city taxes, that property can be foreclosed upon for a tax sale, and the city would recover its money that way. Now, that usually is not going to be merely a city tax that's not paid. It's going to be a broader tax bill that was unpaid, and therefore, it's going to be something that is going to be handled probably at the county level.
Is this the first time an SSA is being used to finance a project by, in Lake Forest?
I'm not aware of the city having used an SSA, City of Lake Forest having used an SSA in this manner. This is not at all uncommon in other communities, including communities that border the City of Lake Forest.
I guess my, if I were a developer...
The Lake Forest Heights subdivision, but that was now almost probably 25, 30 years ago. Lake Forest Heights subdivision, the roads and so forth, will put in through an SSA.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in here and add that to Bob's comment. The Lake Forest Heights subdivision was, in fact, financed in the same manner. An SSA was created there. But it's not unusual. Holland Court is being done right now. We've done it traditionally throughout, you know, Knollwood, Club area, and other SSAs.
Well, Holland Court is a project that is long done. Those are improvements, not as part of a developer's initiative to create something new. That's after all the homes have been in, and there's something that's being put in.
No question, no question.
My main question was more directed toward any developer in Lake Forest now that can look for an SSA to bolster their equity to finance a project, while I see a lot of merit in this one. I mean, what are we, what are we doing going forward? If it's, if it's equity that can be used, I mean, all we're doing is potentially over-financing things again. As, I mean, not again, I use the word, the United States again, as we got into the trouble here, but not, no insinuation whatsoever. I just...
Well, I'm untaken.
I mean, we clearly, you're right. We clearly set up, you know, we opened the door for other developers coming forward and trying to ask us to use SSAs, and I think it's going to have to be the judgment of the council whether we want to do that or not.
As long as it doesn't become a right of a developer.
You know, I don't think it can ever be a right. I think we have, you know, full decision whether we want to do it or not. So I think, you know, it's something we've got away. Obviously, from our perspective on this one, I think the thinking of the council was, and it's still a belief I have, is A, you know, we like this project a lot, and it's going to be difficult to do without it, and B, you know, obviously, there are a lot of fees that come with a project like this. Okay? And that's something else as the city, and the city council, that we need to be aware of, that by doing this, there are a lot of fees that get paid to the city, and, you know, those fees are helpful, obviously, in difficult economic times.
You know, I want to get back to your point, though, David. It's going to be difficult to do this project without this. We haven't done any analysis to determine whether that in fact is the case. We have a representation that that in fact is what's going to happen, but it appears from what Vic said that we haven't done an independent analysis of whether this project is on the teeter totter such that if we don't do this, it's going to fall off. And I have a lot of trouble establishing this kind of valuable benefit without us doing the analysis on a case-by-case basis. Now, maybe we'll find out that absolutely this is really essential, absolutely needed. But until we do that, I just have a little problem. Not more than a little problem. I have a problem jumping through this and setting the kind of precedent I think that David might be talking about.
If I might, if I might just offer one clarification. The point that you're making, Alderman Whitman, is an appropriate one, but just, just for clarity, it is not a legal question. That's actually a policy question. The legal requirements for an SSA does not require any kind of but-for test. So that's something that you, as council members, will need to make a determination on whether, as you make your gut check in voting, whether this is an appropriate thing, whether that's an important consideration.
I'm not saying it's a legal requirement.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure if there was any misimpression.
If I could, what I'm hearing you say is we have no, no parameters to qualify for an SSA in our city.
What's this showing? What is our test of need? What is the test of need on something like this? We don't have one.
I don't know why we would need one. I mean, we're...
Because I don't think our job is to provide extra financing, or at least to...
Facilitate.
But we're not providing extra financing. I think it's important to understand the distinction here. We are not at financial risk here.
We have a representation that this project is on the cusp of failure unless this doesn't...
Alderman, I just have to jump in. It's not on the cusp of failure, and I, and I really don't, just don't want to spread that, that kind of discussion in public that this is on the cusp of failure. This, this, this project is succeeding. It's been a three-year in the making. It is a phenomenal project. It's been reviewed and re-reviewed, and with tremendous applause. So I just need to reiterate that it's not on the cusp of failure.
Well, then who's...
It is, it, the, the city is allowing the mechanism to move forward. The city doesn't stand behind it.
Tom, then what does it mean, difficult to sustain without the benefits offered by the SSA? That's what's stated in here. We're told that that's a representation. What does that mean?
What it, what it means is that it helps bridge the gap between the bank financing and the equity required within this project. This is not equity in the project. This is just, helps bridge that gap. When you see six million dollars of, of additional financing that's really on the backs of the future homeowners that William Blair is, is, is selling, I think that, that gives comfort. Those are the people who do their due diligence. They have, they have more documentation relating to this, this piece of property, this project, future economics, sales. It, it, it really, you know, I didn't want to get in this position, the city is not being burdened at all. This is a real benefit to the, to this community and, and, and I need to really emphasize it. This is really to be able to say the last farm in Lake Forest, the reason why we're putting pavers in there is because it's, it really is the same look that we had on Western Avenue. Anybody can drive down Western Avenue now and see the, the, the pavers that used to be sitting there and, and we're trying to reintroduce that, pervious pavers. It comes at a premium and that's the reason that some of that discussion got thrown into the SSA.
Tom, I think there's a lot of beauty to this project. I've said so just a few moments ago. I just have a problem with perhaps setting a precedent and also establishing something like this without, based upon a statement that we don't know the, the specifics behind.
I, you know, I understand. I think it's a benefit, I think the city could utilize this in, in properties that the city may have in the future that they need to dispose of. I think it's a great vehicle for future developers on Lower Avenue. To be able to, to offer this type of mechanism can be a benefit to the taxpayers of this community and it will be, I think, if, if handled right. So, I think you take it on a case-by-case basis. I think it's a-
I, I think if we approve it, we should make some comment of, because of the uniqueness and the scale of the project, that would be a reason for approval.
Well, and because of the economic time.
And the economic time, something to limit the, the future requests.
We know the city's finances are in upshank.
It's case by case, that's right. It doesn't necessarily mean only because of bad economic times. It may be a wonderful project that needs that to be done. We had Westminster Place, the building that was built there was done with special bonds. I mean, a lot of places are done that way.
Well, if you picture yourself in a position of the other person that wanted to buy the farm but couldn't afford to because he was unaware of this or, or something, maybe that's not a reasonable excuse. I, I would hate for it to become an unfair advantage between developers.
Well, I, I think we have to, I think we have to look a little bit in a global sense of, of how are we going to stimulate, give stimulation to our developers of trying-
I'm for this, I really am. I just want to be-
We really, we really need to step out of the box sometimes and sometimes we don't. And we've, we just had an hour and a half presentation of the, the CBD and some things that we need to step out of the box there and get moving. And here's a perfect example and I, I think it's a great idea. We should move forward.
Look, Vic, is your question-
Can I also clarify for one point because I, I apologize if this is causing some of the misunderstanding or misleading that Alderman Whitman is referring to. The write-up that you're referring to was prepared by staff. It's not reflected in the ordinance and obviously it's not reflected by the comments that we just heard from Mr. Swarthout. Maybe it was too strong a language in that point, in what's written in here. So, I just want to make that distinction, that that was part of the staff write-up, but that's not part of the ordinance and it's certainly not the representation from the developer and builder.
And I just wanted to make one other clarification. I, I don't want to leave the impression that the staff hasn't had any discussions. I, I do want to clarify that the city attorney, Kathy Reinertson, the city's finance director, have been involved in discussions with Mr. Swarthout, with Blair and with the city's bond council. So, this isn't coming to you without some, the expertise of the city attorney and, and the city's finance director, not in endorsing it, but simply taking pains to understand what's being proposed and why it's being proposed.
A question for Vic, if you can answer this. Is there a capacity issue here if we have developer, future developer with Barra wish to do this or, or a developer for municipal services, property?
I did have that question about applying capacity.
There are, there are capacity issues because of the bank qualified limits. Right now, it's thirty million, drops down back to ten million. I can't remember if it's after this or next fiscal year, but, or calendar year. It's not from what Kathy Reinertson has calculated an issue for us in fiscal twenty, or calendar year twenty ten.
We'll just stay on that train of thought though. If, if we do this for White Stable Farms and say a year from now, some, a developer comes forward on Barra, is there capacity for that developer or have we used up that capacity?
That, that's going to be determined on a year-by-year basis. If we have other bond, and again, that, that's why, that's why Kathy Reinertson was brought into this discussion, to make sure that we knew what our ability was in this instance. If we were-
And it's, it's a little bit of a moving target because the government resets its bank qualified debt. It used to be ten million, they took it up to thirty million. It's been thirty million for a couple of years.
It's going back to ten likely at the end of this year.
Even goes back to ten. I mean, one of the things we had talked about with this project was that this was only going to be good through this year.
The limited window of opportunity was one of the, the concerns.
And that's one of the things that's not contemplated in the ordinance that, that, you know, I had a question about, which is, we have room to do it this year. Okay? We may not, you know, if it goes back to ten next year, I don't think we have room.
No, we, we would need to do the issue in twenty ten.
So, and I don't think the ordinance in here sets the, sets the, the date on that.
Right. And this ordinance isn't the vehicle for doing that, but that is one of the things that would have to occur.
But we should also then be cognizant of the fact that this may be kind of a first-come, first-served basis of an opportunity to use such a, a means for this method.
And I think that, I think that staff has been A, able to monitor because there aren't a lot of things on the radar screen these days, but they've been able to monitor, you know, when things are coming up and if there seem to be multiple developments that are looking for similar types of opportunities, I think that that's something that will need to be presented to the council if somebody actually comes forward with such a request. And again, what you're asked for tonight is not to approve it, but rather to undertake the commencement of the process here at a public hearing. You're still going to have the opportunity to consider the establishing ordinance, which will likely be coming to you at the same time of any proposed bond ordinance for approval of the actual financing. So, you'll know a lot more at the time you're asked to take any action that's going to be having, having any kind of final impact. This is really to move the process along. As far as the precedent goes, I think the comments that have come out tonight are exactly right. This does not say what the policy of the city is. On the other hand, the, the special service area is in each instance like you're creating a new special taxing district. And whether you do it or not is always going to be within the legislative discretion of this council or any future council. So, at the time that it comes forward is when you make the decision, is this good for the city or is it not good for the city? That's your ultimate decision to make and you, you consider it in the context of all the circumstances.
I, I think it's a good mechanism.
And it's a mechanism that's used successfully in a lot of different contexts.
I agree. And I think it's a viable mechanism. I think the only we, we should be aware of again is that it may not be viable for every project coming forward, given on different capacity issues of the city itself as well. But it also encourages people to be creative and in this economic climate, I think we should encourage people to do so.
And I think Mayor Cowie, just to, to go back to your question, is that might, you might recall that as a part of the budget process, we actually showed you three years' worth of what we had anticipated to be dead issuance for that reason. And so, when we had the early meetings with Blair, we made it very clear to them as to what that capacity was. As everybody has said, that ceiling is pretty high right now at thirty million. If this was ten million dollars, we might not even be having this conversation because the capacity wouldn't have been there.
I understand that, Bob. I just, I'm trying to make a point that if other developers are out there and they're saying, hey, oh, look at, the city is now undertaking this method.
Right.
Which is a good thing, I believe. I just want them to, you know, they come forward and say, well, hey, you know, he got that, how come I didn't get that? Well, it's not that we, they may not want to do it, it's maybe that we not be able to do it given those capacity issues. And I think we need to just kind of clarify that for, for, for now and for later.
One other thing, one other thing that I might mention, just because it's been a fashion in which this tool has been used in other communities that, that I work with, is that, you know, a typical subdivision that's coming in with no relief whatsoever may not necessarily be one that we'd want to grant this. I mean, this is often used both as a carrot as, as well as a stick. And in this instance, now, I will say in this instance, the developer came in sort of already using his own stick to do the type of development that, that the city was looking for and has been very cooperative in the process of, of reaching the outcome that's been presented for you earlier this evening. Oftentimes, a developer wants to do X, we may want them to do Y and the special service area may actually be our means of getting them to do that. So, you know, I, I think that we, we need to always look at all of the tools in our, in our tool chest and use them in the right instances for the right projects. It's up to you to decide that question, but I think particularly with special service areas where it's going to be bonded with all of the burden and cash flow issues borne by the, the property in question, that you want to look at that on a case-by-case basis. Certainly, when we're going to be fronting the money for a special service area, which are for the smaller ones, if we had some, some discussion both in the budget context and in the more general special service area context, it might be more appropriate to have already sort of set up your checkpoints before something is even brought forward. But I think these are different in context than the smaller ones where we're fronting the money in advance. I, I think Holland Court is, is the example that we can look at most recently.
So, who developed those checkpoints, that list of criteria?
They've, they've already been developed in part. I don't know if they've been finalized as far as the council posits.
That's what?
I think it's pending before the Public Works Committee because if I'm not mistaken, akin of Remesh, that we were about ninety percent there. We actually had one down on Lake Road that we were looking at for curbs, but they didn't meet the threshold of the signatures, so it didn't go any further than that.
Right.
So, I think that, you know, we're ninety percent there, we just haven't finalized it simply because we don't have another project pending right now.
Well, if, if we are going to confront a possible capacity issue, shouldn't we have some way to determine to where those limited dollars are going to go, where that limited capacity is going to go, rather than a first-come, first-served?
But this year, we don't have a limited capacity. We have excess capacity, which will go away. And it won't, it, it's not like you can roll it over for another year. But I, I think some of your points are good and I, you know, I, maybe I'd recommend it, I don't know if this would be rolling with the developer, either the Finance Committee or something, if we had William Blair come in as well to kind of explain the financing, where the, where the burden is and who's bearing the risk, et cetera, to walk through that. Because this is a fairly common transaction that banks have been doing for quite a while. And that might, I don't know if that'll be helpful, but it might be helpful as a way to understand financing mechanisms.
And I think also Alderman Whitman, we can work with Kathy Reinertson and, and Alderman Grumhouse as chairman of the Finance Committee and maybe as a part of our CIP discussion in, in November, is to look forward to, say, two thousand and eleven and say, okay, what are we anticipating for city issuance? So, then if the ten million dollar cap goes back into place, then what do we think is going to be potentially available either for SSAs or some other purpose? And so, that we, a year in advance, if you will, have an idea as to what that limited capacity is.
I mean, I certainly see the value of this, particularly when there's a, a good project, but just am concerned about too much of an ad hoc treatment without enough standards and guidelines for us. We have, we have this, you know, we've dealt with this.
And I, and I don't know who would be appropriate, Kathy. Would Plant Commission be the appropriate body to maybe think about that a little bit going forward? Additionally, I know we've had a fairly extensive discussion on this project, but if, if we were to, you know, to, to meet Stu's concerns here, would it be the Plant Commission that we said, take a look at this and come up with some criteria to Alderman Wharthout?
Yeah, actually, we are having that discussion in council's direction about, in general, not just this one.
I thought we did that.
So, that's something we can hold in.
I mean, you know, I think one of the issues is there is a financial aspect behind this, right? Both from a, the whole capacity point of perspective, but also from the whole fee perspective, that, you know, we need development to drive our budgets. It's the reality of the situation. The school needs development to, you know, Parks and Rec needs the impact, you know, we need that stuff if we're going to, you know, be able to make these capital expenditures that we know we need to make over the next three to five years.
Well, that was part of our discussion.
Right.
From your point of view, I know that the fees associated with this development are significant and the commitment is that those fees are going to be paid as part of this process. So, that meant something to us as we considered using this tool.
Right. I don't think there's any question that this is a good project to spend money on. I think it's the process by which, I mean, I'm the current recipient. I've got letters on my desk right now for SSAs, but they're, they're handled by the Economic Development Group for the community that we're moving part of our company to and, and then it's a reward for moving a head, a headquarter move or whatever the, whatever the scenario is. And there doesn't appear to be that individual or the criteria by which you'd qualify, number of jobs or, there's a very clear list for these things where I've been involved in them. Pleasant Prairie right now, I'm working with Mr. Badals, if you know him. But there's no list here. There's no, someone who's not a, I mean, there's no rule. There's no, it's good, absolutely. We need the money, absolutely. But, but, but why White Stable and not Barra? Not that anyone's come forward, but first-come, first-served doesn't seem right.
Vic, can you, is there a way to, you know, as we fir-, I know we're doing step number one here in the process. Is there a way to provide us with some benchmarks from some other communities on this topic?
I lost, I lost a little.
Some benchmarks from other communities on this topic? You know, in terms of what kind of thresholds or minimums or? You know, we have a lot of good goals in this in terms of the environmental and the preservation and the other things that we've valued greatly here in Lake Forest, but maybe there's some additional ones.
Yeah. I, I think that some communities have set up some kinds of strict standards for, for thresholds. For example, I mean, Lake County will, but they require a high signature level for that. In this instance, we have the owner, it's a single owner, so that's not really an issue here. Some have required that it's only going to be done for creating improvements that are necessary to remedy an existing, like if it's a septic area, turning it into sanitary sewer where the septics are failing, or if it's for water, it's for when there, the water is, got some, some stink to it or some other kind of problem. I, I think that you have to identify whether this is going to be used for remedial purposes and then there are certain thresholds, if it's going to be used for economic development purposes, if it's going to be used for promoting certain types of development outcomes. I, I think this one could certainly be viewed as at least two of those three, both certain development outcomes as well as economic development because of the, you know, the regular, relatively stagnant development market. When you start getting into those latter two, they're obviously more ephemeral in terms of the standards. So, I, I think that those are, are things that can certainly be formulated. I do know that the Plant Commission has had some initial discussions about that. I'm not quite sure where that status is. One of the things that we can have as a takeaway from this discussion is that when, assuming that you go forward with the proposing ordinance tonight and we close the public hearing, when a, an establishing ordinance is presented to you, we can better articulate some of the things that have made this a worthwhile candidate for consideration of special service area financing. Certainly, they are set out in the, the special use permit that you had first reading on tonight, but we can import some of those into the SSA establishing ordinance. So, at least we start to formulate a, you know, a, a threshold that needs to be crossed for different types of special service area considerations.
I think people feel fairly good about this. I think they, we may need a little more meat on the bone for the next discussion, it sounds like.
All right. Given that.
Okay. I think we know where the worst is.
We will need a motion to waive first reading and then if that's a task, if that's approved, then a motion to approve the establish, or proposing ordinance and then we'll have the public hearing.
And then ratification.
That's part of the approval of the ordinance. That's part of the, it's built- That's part of the approval of the ordinance. That's part of the, it's built into the ordinance. You'll see that.
Later.
I'll make a motion to waive first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Propose?
Then I make a motion to grant final approval of the proposing ordinance.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Grumhouse?
Aye.
Alderman Milbert?
Aye.
Alderman Widman?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luthy?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Eight yes, no nays, a motion, carries.
Motion to open public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. The public hearing is, is open? Do we have any public testimony in this regard?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is now closed. We will move on to our next item of business. Our next item of business is new business. We have one item, which is a discussion on setting aside funds in the fiscal year 11 budget for reinstituting the overhead sewer program, presented by City Engineer Ken Magnus.
Have a long evening tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Maron, members of the city council. We touched on this subject at the committee home meeting, and it involves reinstituting a program that we had in 2002, 2003, about cost sharing for converting basement sewage to gravity to an overhead system. And at that time, it was a 50-50 cost share with a maximum amount of $2,500. The reason that we're thinking of, or recommending that we go forward at this time, that we received some renewed interest from residents about this program.
I guess I would have two questions on this. One is, you know, at, at a 50-50 cost share and 2,500, that's going to allow us to do 10 houses, which doesn't seem like enough to me. So I'm wondering if maybe we do it up to $1,000, and, you know, 50-50 up to a maximum of $1,000 from the city, so we can do more. And then the second thing, you know, I thought good points were raised earlier about, you know, is the overhead the only thing that we'll allow? I mean, if we have a house where you can't do the overhead for whatever reasons, or it's prohibitively expensive because you've got a, you know, I don't understand the engineering and the plumbing behind it, is someone's, you know, in coordination with our engineers or our plumbing consultants willing to try and do a check valve or something of that nature, and they have documented expenses, would we agree on some of that? I guess those are the two issues that were, thoughts I had as I, as I was going through this.
Yeah, certainly, I think the second point is a good one, and I think when we put this in place back in 2002, 2003, we weren't opposed to doing a check valve. It was more of those had been installed in some circumstances, but we knew that they hadn't always worked simply because of, you know, something blocking it, whatnot. I don't think the staff is opposed to including either-or in the program. I think the only question, though, and goes to your first point, is I think when we instituted this back in 2002, 2003, we wanted to make sure that there really was a financial incentive for people to go forward and do it. And that was roughly, I think at that time, we felt that it was about 50%, give or take, because every house was going to be different, of the cost of the program. I think if you roll it back to 1,000, while you think you may pick up more, you then lose any financial incentive. And, and quite candidly, in 2002, 2003, when we offered 2,500, we had one. We had one person take us up on it. And I think unfortunately, what happens is, is you get further away from the event, people say, that won't happen again while I live here, or whatever the case might be. So I guess my feeling would be to put 25,000 into the program, let's see how many people actually come forward. If we exhaust the 25,000, and we have a number of other people on the list, we'll come back to you and, and say that that's the case. I guess the only question I would ask, Ken, is I think the cost of a check valve is very different than the cost of overhead plumbing, and so I don't know what 50% of a check valve project would be versus the overhead plumbing.
Well, that would vary, but it's, it's quite a bit less expensive than the overhead system. And I kind of echo, echo your comments about the $2,500. I think we should keep that. Because part of the problem was, we were getting estimates well over $10,000, $15,000 to convert overhead.
Well, I mean, if it's that expensive, that's, you know.
If you have a, just your diagram here, if all you do is you put in your sump pit, and your pump, and your, your sanitary pump, and you can use PVC piping for sewage pumping, right, for this, to hit into your line, and you're on your, I mean, if you had a unfinished basement, where all you had to do was break the concrete to find the pipe and break the concrete to put the pit in, do you know what that kind of, is that a $5,000 job, or a...
I would think it'd be under $10,000, certainly.
$10,000?
The most simplest, yes.
And so far, you could go down.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's so many complications to that. Something about Rose and plumber.
And that's where it is, it was indicated.
I know every house is different, but if you just had that, there's no benchmark for what it would cost, huh?
No, I think back in 2002, 2003, we thought it was between 5,000 and 7,000 at that point in time. So that's where we came up with the 2,500 number.
Maybe we should increase it. If the costs have gone up and our intention was to pick up half, maybe we should increase that.
Up two.
Yeah, up two. I like Bob's recommendation. Let's see what works and see how many people actually come forward. You know, once you come back.
2,500 is a big incentive.
If we get some information or experience that suggests that we can do something differently that will be more effective, then, then let's go that route.
I mean, I, you know, maybe what we do is we improve to 25,000, and we ask staff to go back and put a proposal together for how exactly we're going to do it, and we look at it at the next meeting.
Well, and staff is going to look at each individual one that was to be done and make sure it was right, so that they can come back with how many people are there and what the costs are, and we can evaluate it on that basis.
And I'd love to talk to the plumbers, too. It sounds like the plumbers, you know, you can't get estimates, and, you know, is there one, one or two plumbers that we should pick and say?
These guys know what they're doing.
These guys know what they're doing.
We do have a few that have done this work. Right. But I think if we have a list of three to five, we can say, these are three to five that have done similar work in the city. They're all bonded, they're all licensed. And then we don't get into a position to go with Joe versus Bill. So I think we can do that. The other thing that we can do at your June 21st meeting, Michael Thomas will be here. He actually has had personal conversations with three people who are very interested in seeing this program go forward. We could probably have actual cost estimates for those three projects, and then that will give better ideas to exactly what this program will cost.
I think it's important to clarify, would somebody get 5,000 if they did the check valve and the pump, or 2,500 per house? If we're going to include both, we might want to separate them.
Well, and maybe we only give 1,000 for a check valve and 2,500.
Have to see what the cost is based on each individual one, rather than just a set.
What about, when I do this, move that we set aside $25,000 for plumbing conversion problems with, not limited to overhead plumbing, but each homeowner who receive a maximum of 2,500 or 50% of their actual cost.
Second.
You wait a second.
The lesser, the lesser, the lesser of 2,500, the lesser of 2,500 or 50% of their actual cost.
True. I think staff should try and put something together and come back to us.
Yeah, we'll be back to you on the June 21st meeting with much more detail on it.
We have a, a motion done to approve the set aside 25,000? Did you make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll need a roll call on that.
Aye.
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 Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Marsh?
Aye.
Alderman Hanrahan?
Aye.
Alderman Luthy?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Eight yes, no nays, a motion, carries.
Thank you, Pat. Any other additional items for council discussion this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.